9:08 here on March 2nd, Tuesday, 2021. I'm going to call to order the special call, the meeting with Travis County for the reports on COVID. We have a quorum present. Judge, we're ready when you are.
Thank you. I'll call to order the joint meeting of the Travis County Commissioners Court and the Austin City Council. And first go to Audrey, do we have any callers on this item?
We have no callers on the line at this time, Judge.
Okay, thank you. To help ensure the efficient use of Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden Howard's time and manage the length of the briefing, again, asking folks to limit ourselves to one question in the order below, if time permits, we can have a second round of questions. So the way we'll go about it today is the Commissioners Court members, then the county judge, city council members, then the mayor, and then closing of the city council by the mayor, and then closing of the Commissioners Court by the county judge.
And colleagues, we're going to go and counsel district order this time. We're back to that process. We'll begin with District 1.
Okay.
Judge?
Thank you. And so I think, Dr. Esq., if you are in this meeting somewhere, are you ready to kick it off for us with your briefing?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Let me share my screen and we'll get started.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Judge and Mayor, for the opportunity to update the council and court regarding our COVID-19 response. Again, the slides that you're used to, sorry, the slides that you used to are updated this week based upon our new data. Yesterday, we reported 265 new cases with a moving average of new cases of 242. Obviously, we had a gap in that data over the week of the ice storm where very few tests were performed and resulted that week. But overall, since February 1st, we've had a 57% increase in that moving average of new cases. So again, we continue to move in a better direction in terms of our new cases diagnosed. Similarly, our admissions are also on the decrease. Yesterday, we reported 15 new admissions with a moving average of 29, which drops us down into the Stage 3 territory. Again, this is the key indicator for staging. We'll continue to monitor that admission data and make a recommendation later this week or early next week if we continue in that Stage 3 territory to go ahead and move stages. So we'll hopefully have some updates later this week or early next week regarding that. But similar to our case data, admissions are down 57% as well since February 1st. This graph is showing three things. Again, the blue is our hospitalizations, the orange are ICU utilization, and the gray is ventilator usage. Yesterday, our hospitalizations were 248 with a moving average of 284. That's a 47% increase since February 1st. ICU use yesterday, 76 with a moving average of 93, down 40% since February 1st. Ventilator use yesterday, 58 with a moving average of 65, and that's down 33%. So again, all of these indicators moving in a better direction, which gives us, you know, reasonable hope that these numbers will continue to decrease if those protective actions, the masking, distancing, and hygiene continue in our community. When we look at our regional infusion center, which is helping to keep individuals out of the hospital, again, this is a free service given to those who are at high risk for hospitalization. We see that since the opening, 693 individuals have been treated at that facility. Still plenty of capacity, much more capacity than folks who are getting it. So we want to encourage individuals in our community, if they are at high risk for developing severe disease, to contact a healthcare provider and get a referral to that regional infusion center for that therapy. So we're grateful for the state, for TDM, for this partnership, which is helping to contribute to this decline in hospitalizations. A quick update regarding our alternate care site. As of yesterday, we had 32 individuals hospitalized there, 168 total treated and released. So a total of 200 individuals who have been received service through the alternate care site. Our capacity is up to 50 right now. As the hospitalization numbers fall, we will start to look at plans for decreasing the capacity there.
Yes.
And eventual demobilization. But we may have more of an update on that next week. Now, this is an update of our, sorry, of our projections from the UT modeling consortium. This is kind of zoomed in on the November to April timeframe. And it does show that we continue to move in a downward direction. This hasn't been updated since the 22nd of February, so we may see an update today or tomorrow to this, to refine this data a little bit. But it looks like if, again, if the same protections that are in place today continue, that we could see Stage 2 territory by the end of March or early April. Again, what we've seen happen before in our jurisdiction in Texas and across the country is that when folks relax too soon, these numbers bounce. And that's, I think, the most important factor right now. While we're focused on vaccinations, while we're focused on getting out of this and being normal again, now is too soon to return to normal. Now is too soon to take away masking. Now is too soon to forget about social distancing and the other protective measures. Now is the time to continue those things so that we can put ourselves in a better position, particularly in advance of several threats for SIRS that we have coming up. That includes spring break, that includes St. Patrick's Day, that includes Easter. So if we can resist the temptation to relax too much right now, then we can put ourselves in a better position going into April and May and avoid another surge. We see similar trends in relation to hospitalizations, continuing decline over the next month. And the same is true for our ICU utilization, again, continuing down on a downward trend significantly through the month of March. This is an update of our hospitalizations based upon age. There's not much change, net change in the older age groups, so the 60 and over age groups, week over week. When we look at, however, the younger age groups, so the under 20 age groups, there is an increase in those individuals in terms of their percentage of hospitalizations. And I'll talk more about that and why that is in subsequent slides. We look at the numbers of individuals in each of those categories hospitalized week over week. We can see that we did see an increase as compared to the previous week. Again, this week of February 15th to 21st during the ice storm is a bit of an anomaly. So we may see some folks who are hospitalized in this last week that would have gone to the hospital that previous week. So again, we'll continue to watch that trend, but I expect that we'll see a decrease in that number of individuals hospitalized next week, in next week's update. We have seen a decrease in the individuals in the 80-plus age group moving from 34 to 25, some slight increases in the 60 to 69 and 70 to 79 age groups, as well as the 50 to 59. If we look down at the bottom of the graph on the right-hand column, we start to see some layering happening. So an increase in that 10 to 19 age group, moving from three hospitalizations the previous week to eight last week, and also some admissions in the younger age groups, that 1 to 9, and the less than 1 age groups. Again, I'll talk a bit more about that in subsequent slides. What I'm showing you here is the hospitalizations based on race and ethnicity. When we look at the Latinx percentages of hospitalizations, 39.5% last week. Our white, non-Hispanic, 38.2%. And ongoing increases in our African-American percentage of hospitalizations, so 15.9% of hospitalizations last week from our African-American community. You know, while we continue to see disproportionate impacts in our Latinx community, right now, the most disproportionate impact is happening in our African-American community. That 15.9% is significantly over the representation of the African-American community in the overall Travis County community. This is coupled with the African-American community disproportionately getting fewer vaccines than they should be getting in terms of their makeup of the Travis County population. So again, we've got more work to do in our communities of color to ensure that not only we're preventing hospitalizations through things like PPE advocacy information, but also ensuring that we're focusing more and more vaccine efforts to outreach to those communities who have been disproportionately impacted throughout this pandemic. When we look at the numbers of individuals in those races and ethnicities hospitalized, again, our Latinx community moved from 67 individuals hospitalized the previous week to 87 last week. A small increase in our white, non-Hispanic numbers of individuals hospitalized, 82 to 84. Our African-American community moving from 29 to 35 individuals hospitalized last week. So again, more work to do in terms of our hospitalizations, and particularly in those communities of color. Now, when we look at our positivity numbers, again, that the week before last week is a bit of an anomaly because there were such a small number of tests performed. So less than 5,000 test results for that week across, you know, all of the entities who are feeding in test results into Austin Public Health. So you see that 10.2%, probably some of that is related to that very low number of individuals tested. Last week, however, we do have a significantly higher number of tests performed, and right now, that positivity is 6.9%. So again, moving in a better direction. Again, that number is subject to change because we expect to see additional tests coming in this week from last week. But again, certainly another indicator that we are moving in a better direction in terms of this pandemic in Austin and Travis County. When we look at the positivity by race and ethnicity, again, we're seeing improvements. Our Latinx community, previous week, 13.6% positive, last week, 13.3, so a small decrease there. Our native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander had an increase, 16.7% to 23.1%. Our Asian-American community, 7.6% to 7.0%. Sorry, our African-American community, 7.6% to 7.0%. Asian-American community, 8.5% to 4.4%. And our white, non-Hispanic community, 8.2% to 5.6%. So overall, most race and ethnicities have seen a drop week over week in terms of positivity. We have a, you know, our Asian-American community, under the 5%. Everybody is still significantly over that 3%, that green dotted line that we'd like to see in order to move down into Stage 2. So again, more work to do to continue those protective efforts so that we can further suppress disease transmission in the community. This is a graph of the positivity by age group. We are very pleased to see that our older age groups have the lowest positivity, with our 80-plus age group being the lowest. So that's certainly a change than what we saw earlier in February, where we're seeing those older age groups leading positivity. I suspect that some of that is due to the focused vaccination efforts on those 60-plus age groups, which may be starting to show in the positivity rates. However, we are seeing the highest positivity in our three youngest age groups. So the less than 1, 1 to 9, and 10 to 19 age groups. So again, as we vaccinate our community, we have to consider the fact that we have a large population who are not eligible for vaccines yet, and that's individuals, teenagers, and younger. And I bring this up because when we look at other countries who have been very successful in vaccination efforts, like Israel, that have vaccinated maybe 60% of their population, they're seeing a surge right now. And that surge is related to individuals 19 years old and younger. So again, when we consider things like mask mandates and alterations in these protective behaviors, changes and moving back to normal, we have to remember that there is very, there are very few individuals in those school age group, school age groups and younger that have protection. So there's still concern about surge in that community, and that will continue until we have products which are approved for younger age groups. Now, when we look at the positivity a bit more detail by positivity in our school-aged children, we can see that all of them are significantly over the community positivity rate. High school, more than double the community positivity, 15.2%. Middle school, 11.9% for last week. Elementary school, 14.2%. Preschool, 9.3%. Again, some of this is going to be related to the fact that relatively fewer individuals in this age group are tested, which is going to drive up the positivity a bit. But certainly concerning trend because these are some of the highest positivity rates that we've seen in school-aged children. Again, this reinforces the message that we have to continue to encourage our children to mask and distance to avoid the social gatherings so that we can avoid outbreaks within these younger age groups. We are concerned about the impact of some of the complications that are hitting children. And, you know, again, the potential for variants and that impact on younger age groups. So again, take-home message this week is we have to remain vigilant, we have to remain cautious until we can drive down these disease, this disease transmission further. We look at positivity, or the cases reported by schools. We see that we had 70 reported last week. We had a couple of school districts that did not report last week. 42 student cases, 28 staff cases, you know, significant decreases from previous weeks in terms of positive cases related to schools. Again, you know, we had the winter event and then an extension of the closure that extended into last week for many school districts, which likely is impacting the numbers that we're seeing for last week. When we look at the close contacts, again, significantly lower than we've seen in previous weeks, about 300 students and staff in quarantine where we were more than 1,000, 1,500 in previous weeks. So again, likely impacted by the winter event. Quick update on our nursing home, long-term care facility dashboard. Again, as we've seen positive in the community drop, we have seen cases in long-term care facilities drop remarkably. Again, I think part of what we're seeing here, the magnitude of impact on these facilities are due to the focused vaccination efforts in these amongst the residents and staff. So 12 cases in the past 14 days, only 57 in the previous 28 days. So remarkable changes in the cases associated with these facilities over the past month. Again, we're in the middle of flu season, so I want to give a couple of slides of update regarding our influenza situation. Week 7, 0.84% positive, a total of 1.19% positive for the entire season. So less than 100 cases of flu diagnosed to date. As you may have seen from the CDC earlier this week, this is a record-low flu season. You got to think a testament to the efficacy of vaccinations combined with the non-pharmaceutical interventions that we've seen with COVID-19, the masking, distancing, and the personal hygiene that are impacting the flu numbers. Again, comparing it to our previous three flu seasons, it is defining the base of this curve. So again, we're happy to see this. We're starting to enter the later stages of flu season. So again, we're hopeful that we can continue this low rate of flu, and certainly it has not had a significant impact on our hospitals, as was our concern in the fall. Again, Mayor, Judge, we continue in Stage 4 for now. We will continue to watch the data later this week and into next week to make a determination, recommendation to transition to Stage 3. Our hope is that that will continue. But, you know, again, what we're seeing is all positive indicators of what the next couple of weeks are going to look like. There are still some unknowns. We have an unknown related to the impact of the winter storm, which we can expect to see this week. Our hope is that numbers will continue to drop. But again, if we all continue those protective efforts, continue the vigilance, it will put Austin and Travis County and central Texas in a better position going into the spring. Again, as a reminder, these are the recommendations for Stage 4. Essential trips only, particularly for those individuals who are at higher risk, limiting nonessential travel, masking and distancing when outside the house. We're still recommending that our businesses operate at a maximum of 50% to improve the ability to distance and to prevent that person-to-person spread. We're also continuing to recommend that schools limit attendance at sporting events to the minimum necessary, players, coaches, and parents. With that, I will turn it over to Director Hayden Howard.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Esq. Good morning, Mayor Council, City Council members, Commissioners Court. We want to just provide an update of vaccines that have been provided, kind of given a snapshot between February 21st through February 28th. We were able to provide 33,000 vaccines. As we shared last week, we opened additional sites, extended our hours and days of operation. A significant, most of the backlog doses have been addressed. We do acknowledge that there have been some system input delays. And so what we are just communicating to the public is, is that if you have received your first dose vaccine with Public Health, and it is beyond the 42 days, you can show up at one of our sites. You would need to bring your card with you. Typically, what our staff will do is look at your card, looking up in the system, and assure that you received the first dose from Austin Public Health. And so the other thing is, is that we have restarted our data entry process so we can update our dashboards. We still have a little bit of a delay with our vaccine dashboard, and our staff is going to continue to work on that. Would like to just acknowledge the photo here. This was a grandmother that came in to receive her second dose and was very gracious to allow us to interview her as well as share her photo. Next slide, please. One of the things we would like to also acknowledge, AISD, and their being very flexible with us. As you can see, we were at the AISD Performing Arts Center on last week. And basically, with the setup, we basically had the clinic kind of center stage, as you can see. It was a really good process. We plan to return there this week and continue providing those vaccines. We provided about 85,000 vaccines, which that does include our first and second dose vaccines. Wanted to just provide a snapshot, because I know this was asked last week, about the number of folks that we have that are pre-registered and eligible in the Austin Public Health system, of individuals that are ages 60 and older. Our 12 K doses have not come in yet, but we are anticipating that they will arrive either today or tomorrow, and we will begin to administer those. The Department of State Health Services has announced that 200,000 vaccines will be coming to the state of Texas. We have, you know, have been alerted that some are coming to Travis County, and, you know, basically through the private sector, as well as some vaccines have been sent to Dallas County, as well as Harris County. And so as we can see, with the movement of Johnson and Johnson vaccine, that is definitely going to, you know, add another way for folks to receive their vaccine. We also have been alerted that the plan is, is that the company is willing to ship and prepare 20 million shots in the U.S. by the end of March. And so that's definitely good news. Next slide. As shared in my presentation on last week, I provided information about some updates. We were able to, you know, make some additional changes this weekend with our system. What I wanted to share was a screenshot for folks. And this one is actually, you know, based upon what we released last night. As you can see, this is a part of our queuing system. It actually shows when, that we are going to release 4,000 vaccines. And it just kind of is a way to communicate with people as they are in the system waiting for an appointment. What we have also done is, in the system, is that we have added a second dose form that individuals can also fill out. And so basically, you fill that form out if you've not heard anything from us proactively. And so our folks will be processing those forms as well. Lastly, we also have put a link on for folks if they are having any challenges with the website, and they can communicate that to us. One of the other things, we have added additional employees for the call center to be on our 972 line. And so we actually have about 63 folks that are answering multiple calls and making outbound calls, and still working very well with Travis County staff. We have about 20 at that location as well. So it's about 83 folks that are assisting us with either making, answering calls that are coming in to the city or making outbound calls. In addition to that, with our first those appointments, as you all know, we have typically gone with a Tuesday and Thursday evening. But what we determined yesterday during the day is that it would be helpful for us to release the 4,000 additional appointments. And so that's what we did last night. We sent a release to just let the public know that we were going to release these, those appointments yesterday and get those scheduled for today. There may be some times when we may need to release appointments on an additional day. If we have the ability to have a bigger throughput, there may be options when we will do that with the first dose appointments. Next slide, please. As I shared with you on last week, we have started our mobile vaccine process. Initially, we are really, really focusing in on locations where we have more folks that are seniors, people that are homebound, and/or people that are disabled. And so initially, what we did last week is, was we went to the RBJ Residential Tower. We went to a couple of smaller assisted living locations. This week, we are working with the Housing Authority of the City of Austin at a couple of their locations. And we are also partnering with ADAP on one of these clinics because in our conversations with them, we really felt the need to be able to include them and be able to provide vaccines. with them, we really felt the need to be able to include them and be able to provide vaccines to them as well. We will continue our efforts this way, because what we want to make sure that we are doing is, is initially starting in locations where we can provide, you know, several vaccines in a, in a location and be able to continue to provide that. So we will continue to work with HACA to finish their sites. We've already had a couple of meetings with, with nonprofit providers, looking at ways of how we can roll out our partnership, for example, with Meals on Wheels. They have began to identify folks that we can go out and provide vaccines to that are homebound. In addition to that, we've started conversations with foundation communities and looking at how we can provide vaccines that way. Initially, kind of after we are also working through that, we have begun to receive referrals from folks that are referring folks to us that could benefit from a, from a visit at home. And so our staff are starting that process to put that list together. And then eventually, we are going to be providing the vaccines at home. So as we get a little further along, we will have our media team to create a flyer and we will begin to, you know, to put that out, social media, et cetera, and get that out to our partners. In addition, we just wanted to share from a long-term care update. CVS and Walgreens has provided over 11,000 vaccines to staff and residents at 107 facilities. And basically, what they have been able to do is, is that they have been able to return to those locations that they initially were at. And what they, as, as they, long-term care facilities, as they onboard new staff or have staff that may have changed their mind, that didn't want the vaccine initially, they are adding them and making sure that they are picking them up. So, you know, we, we really have a lot going on with vaccines. We know that we are continuously going to make improvements. And so as we move along, the feedback that we receive from, from you all, as well as the public, as well as our IT folks, we will continue to make improvements and corrections to that system. At this time, that completes my presentation, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Director Hayden Howard and Dr. Esq. Let's just go straight to any questions that we have from court members. Commissioner Gomez, do you have any questions?
No, Judge, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shea?
Thanks, Judge. I did, probably for Dr. Esq., again, my, my standard thanks. I really appreciate all of what you and your staffs are doing. There was a news story that, I think it's Houston that has been testing for evidence of the variants of COVID and has found a very, very large number. Do we have any sense, are we doing any testing locally? And if so, do we have any sense for whether or not we are seeing much evidence of, of the variants, the mutations of the virus? And if so, I am still really unclear as to whether or not any of the vaccines are likely to protect people against the variants. So any, any information you have on that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
So Commissioner, there, there is testing of genomic sequencing going on around the jurisdiction. There's a lot of going on at the University of Texas amongst their cohort of individuals from the campus. We've got some discussions later this week about how we're going to monitor that and make determinations of, of policy recommendations based upon the variants. Right now, most of the variants seen locally and in Texas is the UK variant. The vaccines show that, that is effective against that variant. But as we go, you know, as we go forward, we can expect that more variants will emerge, which will continue to challenge the efficacy of the vaccine. You know, the, the platforms, particularly Moderna, has already started to formulate a booster with the new variants in it. And we can expect, you know, given the magnitude of, of this pandemic, that it's going to be difficult for us to evade significant variants developing across the globe. So I think it's likely that, that we will see booster shots emerge over, you know, the next six months, next year, to start hitting some of those variants until hopefully we can, we can eliminate the COVID-19.
UT Dell yesterday, Commissioner, said about, as they're doing that work, and on their asymptomatic testing, about a third, they said, was the variant.
Thank you. Commissioner Trevillion?
All right. First, I'll start off by saying I appreciate the significant work that you've done, that both of you have done, that you've been willing to reach out into the community and talk to community members and work to build processes. I think that's, that's really important. My question is more along the equity lines, once again, and it is, we do recognize that there's a digital divide, particularly between affluent and, and, and non-affluent communities. And we do realize that a lot of our elders, you know, don't, are computer literate and don't spend time on computers. And I want to know specifically what we're doing to address the needs of, of our elderly population over 70. I've gotten, I've gotten dozens of calls from people who have tried and tried and tried to get into the system and have not been able to do so. And it just seems to me that since we have got large churches, those churches are the strongest institution within the African-American community. They're willing to work with us and they have a good idea of where their sick and shut-in members are. What have we explicitly done with that community to make sure that we are addressing the needs of a lot of our elderly population, which is not being met by our current processes? Not trying to blame that on anyone. I just want to know specifically what we are doing to address the needs of a population that historically has been underserved.
Good morning, Commissioner. I can speak to that. We have done a, we've done a few things during the, kind of the week of the weather storm, kind of in between addressing other issues that were related to weather. We were able to have a couple of meetings, individual meetings with lead pastors in this community and talked about some strategies that they are willing to provide. On Tuesday of last week, we had a larger meeting with faith-based leadership. We probably had about 15 representatives that were present and had a very nice conversation. Some of the things that, that we talked about was, was one, you know, getting them more materials, so they would have that about our process. We talked about the grassroots organization process of where we have, have had some folks to refer folks into our equity line. We let them know that we have had established that area that is providing outbound calls to individuals that don't have access to the internet. We have also had a few of them that have said that they are willing to assist us with locations to provide vaccines to their memberships. And then also, one of the meetings, one of the folks that was attending was a part of the health and wellness area, and they are one of the leaders with the Black Physician Group, and so willing to bring in volunteers as well. And so based upon those meetings that we have, that we've identified and had, as a result of that, we do have three churches that are, are willing to be a site for vaccines. And so typically, what we do is, is that our staff will go out and do site visits and visit with them, look at the location, et cetera. So in the meantime, knowing that the equity line was a way to, for them to really continue to refer folks into us, is going to be the kind of quick win at this time. So those are things that we are working on with our faith-based leaders, and we will continue to do that work with them. And one of them is even, you know, wanting to offer, offer the vaccines after a Sunday service. So we are definitely going to make some strides in that area. So more to come with that when we have more information to share.
Thank you. I'd like to work with you to make sure that, just I understand what we're doing. And thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner Trevillion. Commissioner Howard?
Thank you all for the, the good work over the last week. Mine sort of builds on Commissioner Trevillion's concern for people in the higher ages on the western side of the county. And so I was, made a note about the mobile vaccine program. I'd love to talk with you in the coming weeks about either being able to take the mobile vaccine program to western Travis County, or even if it becomes, you know, the smart thing to do, to set up a mass vaccination clinic out there in a, in a big parking lot. But thank you for all the work you're doing. I appreciate it. That's all, Judge.
Thanks, Commissioner. I think my only question is, first of all, thanks, thanks a lot, and thanks for, you know, obviously, the, the storm set everything back in this community, including the vaccine efforts, but thank you so much for getting that back up and running immediately and so quickly. And I've, I've heard great reports about people who are getting vaccinated at Delco and the other centers, having great experiences when they're there. So thank you so much for all of that. Could you maybe give me your thoughts just on, based on the numbers of the vaccines that we're getting in the community now and, and, you know, with Johnson and Johnson opening up, like you mentioned, do you have any sense of how long we'll be at this? If, you know, if, if things don't get really thrown off course by vaccine variants, is this a six-month vaccination process for, for the, our local sort of population? Or is it longer, just what are your thoughts there?
So Judge, I, I think that, you know, when we start to hit May and June, I think we're going to have a significant portion of those who need to be vaccinated done. I do expect that, that we're going to see a long tail to this. And what I mean is that we're going to start to face issues as we get into May and in June in particular, of, of trying to recruit more people to get vaccine. So I think that last 10% is going to take us a while to get to. Again, we also have to remember that we have no vaccine solution for our youth right now. So that particular piece is also going to lead to a lengthy tail. But I think that, you know, as we approach May and June, our community is going to be in a different position in terms of, of risk of, of an overwhelming surge of our hospital system. I think by and large, that kind of risk will, will be dissipated by, by that time period. So I anticipate that, that we can start to see some more normal things starting to occur around that May-June timeframe.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Esq. Mayor Adler, I will pass it over to you.
Judge, thank you. Colleagues, I don't see the mayor pro tem, is she with us? Okay, we can sort of come back to her. Councilmember Fuentes, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So my question is, I saw on this slide that we have about, I think, 12 or 13,000 80-plus year olds on the waitlist to get an appointment. And so I wanted to see Director Hayden Howard, if you could talk us through, you know, with the call operators that we had, and I'm so appreciative that we're able to scale the amount of call operators that we have on hand to proactively reach out to our seniors here in Travis County, especially considering the digital divide. But how many, have we made it through that call list by now? Are there still seniors in Travis County who have not been touched or received a, a call from us about the vaccine, how to register? And then, you know, based on that number, what more should we be doing and could we be doing to make sure we get all of our seniors signed up on the waitlist? And, and as a side note to that, you know, I'm still receiving volunteer requests from the community on how to help with making those calls. And so I'm curious for your thoughts about additional volunteer opportunities. Very grateful for the website that was rolled out last week. I think that has been super helpful. But I have received additional feedback from the community about little tweaks that we could do to that website, and I'll be sure to send that to you offline. But, but I know that's been a way for, that I've been directing folks to volunteer is to that site, but wondering if we could offer an opportunity to volunteer, to make calls, to help us make a good dent on that list if needed. So short answer, if you could talk us through, have we made it through the call list, reaching our seniors in Travis County? How much, how many do we have left? And what other efforts are, are being considered and worked on at this time?
I will share with you that the majority of people that are receiving our vaccines are 60 years of age and older. And so on a daily basis, we're, we're definitely providing vaccines. When we think about age 80 and older, it's roughly about 300-plus vaccines a day that we are providing to people that fit into that category. One of the things that, you know, we are doing is, is, you know, we're continuing to have folks to, to call them, to make those calls. But what we are still finding is, is that we still have seniors that would prefer not to go through the system. And so that's why we've started more conversations with our partners and looking at, you know, thinking about what Commissioner Howard just mentioned earlier. We may need to be doing some efforts like that with folks that are 80 years of age and older. That was also one of the reasons that we also reached out to the faith-based community to be able to get that done as well. But we, we make, we, we're looking at it, and we're, we're definitely going to need to, to make some changes. We have had some really good success. I will tell you, everyone in our system, even though you see those numbers, they're not Travis County residents, but they're kind of, and I always have to remind folks, the people in our system are from all across the state of Texas. Also, everyone that calls our 972 number are, are folks that are not in Travis County, Hayes, Williamson, et cetera, they're from the state of Texas. So as a hub, we've got to be available to allow folks that are not in Travis County and/or our neighboring counties to register in the system. So that's kind of the other piece that we're working on. So, so those calls are not only going out to folks in Travis County, they're also people that are registered in the system. And so I am starting to kind of favor the process of, of how do we, you know, maybe set up something a little bit different for our folks that are living in, in Travis County. The state has emphasized, you know, the importance of, of making sure we're providing vaccines to seniors, and they're emphasizing folks that are 75 years of age and older. Our data does show us that we are definitely hitting that category pretty well as well. And so continuing to make sure that we're continuing to focus along those age categories. So, so we'll continue that process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rintadia, do you have a question?
I can mute him.
Uh, Dr. Hayden, uh, what I, what I want to know is, uh, I have people that have been calling my office and they're homebound, they somehow, for some reason, have not been able to get, uh, into your, into the system to get, to register. I was wondering, can I help that person out? And if I can, how can I get him and, and his wife on, on the registration list? Is there a number that I can call, my office can call, that could help these people out that have been calling and not having success in getting into the system?
Um, I think what, what we, um, may want to do is just follow up with your office, you know, outside of the call, um, and see how, you know, we may be able to, to work with you and, and folks that may be having some challenges. So we'll definitely, um, touch base with you and schedule meeting with you and your staff.
Thank you. It's, uh, you know, uh, some of these people have, uh, are having, there are people out there that are having a very difficult time getting in and, and I want to really make sure that, you know, we can get them into the registration. And these people are the, are, are seniors, you know, 70 years old and over that have a, a wife or a husband that's homebound, disabled. And I just want to make sure that, you know, they're able to get the, uh, the vaccine or at least get the appointment so that they can get in, in the line to, to get this vaccination. So I'll reach out to my office.
Councilmember Rintadia, thank you. Councilmember Kassar?
I have, uh, a question about sort of vaccine allotment by county and then a, a second question about, uh, some of the new stuff on the website, if that's okay. Uh, so my, uh, the first question is just we, uh, you know, because folks are looking for vaccines wherever they can find them and looking for them in different counties and the like, that there's, um, uh, information going around about whether or not some counties are getting more or less per their share of the population, is that information that y'all can send to us? I don't think it even has to be a part of the dashboard, but do we have good information about across counties, um, uh, how the vaccine allocation is going, uh, for the state so that we can sort of confirm for folks that indeed the vaccines are being distributed across the state in a, in a way equitable based on population?
Uh, Councilor, there is a, uh, DSHS dashboard, uh, which has the allocation, uh, for first and second doses by county. Um, so all that information is available publicly, uh, through that site. We can certainly send out links to, to the offices, uh, with allocation information.
That'd be great. And, and last time we talked, I think you had mentioned there was an out, some outliers in the panhandle, but that other than that, but, but other than that, it was, it remains without outliers except for that exception.
Uh, that's the last time, uh, that I did calculations. We'll be concerned, we'll have another look at, at the, the metro jurisdictions and, and make sure it's, it's staying consistent.
Okay, thanks. That'd be good. Uh, and then, um, I, I, I know that y'all consistently get emails from our offices just about the, the website and people registering. I heard from people, some folks yesterday that were, um, that appreciated some of the changes with the, with the waiting in line, um, and knowing where you are in line, even if it's good news or bad news. Some of the feedback we got was that there might, might be useful for there to be, um, just a lot of clarity for people around, uh, some of the things that were on public health social media, if that could be clear on the website, like if you get logged out while you're waiting for an hour on this page, you know, log back in, you haven't lost your place in line, or even if your place in line is, is further back than the number of vaccines we have, you might still want to wait in line because some people may drop. You know, so just some of that information that I think was really helpful on social media might be useful for folks, uh, on the page. That was one bit of feedback that we got. And then, and then some of the other continued feedback or questions is around, um, uh, pre-registration, which I think is what several of the elected officials here have asked about. Uh, can y'all lay out a little bit about why the pre-registration process is important? Because I've heard that some other counties, uh, don't have that process or have a, a less intensive process for your pre-registration, because I think part of that might be where some of the frustration is stemming from too. I think some of this frustration was knowing where you are in line and it sounds like we're working on that and that's really appreciated, but I think some of the frustration is getting into the system in the first place with, uh, uh, with, with setting yourself up in the system. So can y'all talk through why we have that, um, that way and if there's improvements we're looking at making in that area?
Um, we, we, we typically are making improvements, um, to the system. Um, we made, um, quite a few of them this past weekend. Um, one of the things that, um, we have found is, is because we are a hub provider, um, hub providers must have a system set up where anyone can access it across the state of Texas. Um, in addition to that, um, you, you also as a hub provider should be able to provide a significant number of vaccines out to the public, um, in a short amount of time. Um, and so, so for those reasons, um, we went to a, a system where we can, um, be able to, one, set up a dashboard that everyone likes to see and go to, um, and are able to get that information off. Um, and it is aligned with the rest of the work we've done thus far from a dashboard, um, perspective. Um, in addition to that, um, we needed to create a system that, um, basically could handle, um, a lot of folks, you know, um, accessing it. And so, um, other places, because they're not hubs, um, have decided that's not something that they need to do. Um, everyone may not need to access their system the way they do with a hub. So, so those were several of the things that we thought about. As you also know, um, this is the same platform that we put in place for our testing. So all of our testing, um, data results, et cetera, are in this platform. We've also done contact tracing using this platform. So, so for us, um, to be able to put this system together, um, in the middle of a pandemic, um, was, was a huge lift, um, for everyone in Austin Public Health as well as our partners from CTM, you know, that are assisting us, as well as, um, the contractor. And so, um, uh, you know, our hope is, is now that we have this in place, um, this is something that we could continue to use it because it has other uses that, um, as a system. And so those were the things that we thought about when we, um, knew we needed to have a, and a good system in place that will take us beyond this pandemic.
And Councilmember, let me just jump into address the, the pre-registration piece of it. Now, you're right, there are many jurisdictions that don't have a pre-registration process. So if they get 12,000 doses of vaccines, they open up, they open up the registration process. Once 12,000 qualified people, you know, get an appointment, it shuts down and it opens up again when they have more vaccine. The challenge with this is that it creates a competitive environment, uh, and it does lead to inequitable distribution of vaccine. Those who are more tech savvy, those who have more time to sit in front of a computer and wait for them to open, uh, the more likely they are to get a vaccine. And we know that this negatively impacts our elderly population and our communities of color, which are the two groups that we want to prioritize for vaccination. Uh, so what we did is to create that pre-registration process to allow us to, uh, to be able to create, create a prioritization process, uh, to get the vaccine to the, the people who most need it right now. It also gives us, uh, a lot of data on who we're reaching effectively and who we're not. Uh, we know, for instance, right now that we are underperforming in terms of our outreach to the African-American community, uh, because we have significantly less percentage of, of that community signed up for vaccine as compared to other races and ethnicities. Uh, so it's, it's helpful to us. I know it creates some frustration in the system, but it is incredibly useful to have that two-step process.
Well, thank y'all. I, I appreciate that and I, my sense is, you know, having been out there with, um, with Judge Brown and many of y'all, uh, this weekend, that there, you know, that that is getting a lot of vaccines out to people and, and a lot of folks that seem really to need it that I got to speak to, uh, in the parking lot. Um, I, I think that the work being done to make sure we do get it to older folks, um, not just through the website, but through other processes is really important. Um, and, and just communicating to people that that's what we're doing, I think, is really good. Uh, I, I think you would just continue to hear our urging to try to figure out how to make the website as friendly as possible with the protections you've put in place. We just get notes from people that, you know, that even the size of our fonts is small compared to other places or that, uh, the number of clicks you have to go through and pages you have to go through. And I know that when you're in a pandemic and we have the winter disaster and all these things, that's, that, you know, the, that those things may seem small in some sense, but on the other hand, when people know how important it is to get the vaccine, just making it as readable and user-friendly and understandable, I just think goes a really long way in continuing to build that trust. So I appreciate what everyone is doing and the vaccines we're getting out there, I just think are, um, are forward-facing. The first thing people see from us sometimes is that, is that web interface, so the more we can keep working on that, the better. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes, thank you. Um, I wanted to ask a few more questions. Uh, I appreciate everyone's, uh, questions and I also wanted to say I appreciate the improvements. I did get, uh, feedback on the queuing system that you put into place. Uh, it was very, it was positive feedback because it helped people understand where they were aligned, so I appreciate that. Um, I have some questions, uh, specifically about, um, uh, about seniors. So, um, so help me understand the, the, what we're doing in terms of outbound calls. In other words, it, did, did I hear correctly that, um, that the, the call center is the group that's making those outbound calls? And I'm just curious what list they're using. I know that I've had the opportunity to share some names with you, uh, from constituents and I assume, I'm sure others have also. Uh, I'm also sending over to you, um, as part of our welfare check, uh, process that we did with regard to the winter storm. There were over 14,000 seniors that were called, um, in the city through a volunteer effort. And, and although that effort was not calling specifically about the vaccine, there were seniors identified as part of that effort because they asked about vaccines. So those names are being forwarded, uh, to you also across the city. So my question is, I just wanted to understand a little bit more specifically about who is making the outbound calls and what kind of list are they operating off of? Are they o- operating off a list that, that myself and others, of course, are sending you or just help me understand that? If that makes sense?
Yes, um, they are operating off of, off of several lists. Um, you know, we have folks that refer folks into us, um, from, from grassroots organizations as well as, um, organizations that serve seniors, um, that are, um, providing those referrals to us. Um, and so basically when they receive the referrals, uh, a couple of things that they are doing. Um, a group of them are actually setting up the seniors with the account. So they're going through, setting them up with the accounts. Um, in addition to that, um, then a, another, um, group actually schedules them for the appointment. Um, so they kind of happen not at the same time, uh, because what we're finding is, is that we want to make sure that we have enough appointments, um, to be able to, to provide them the vaccine. And so the first goal is, is to make sure they're set up in the system. And so, um, that's pretty much how that process works. Um, in addition to that, um, we've also referred some folks from our system that are already registered with us. Um, one thing we, we have found is that, um, that has sometimes been the same people. Um, because folks may have called and referred them, um, not knowing that they had already set up an account. And so sometimes it is a duplicate effort, which is, which is fine, um, because we want to make sure that we are able to provide the services there. So that is how, um, our, our teams are working.
Okay, so they're getting, so that means that if a, if a senior is referred to you from whatever source, um, as needing help getting an appointment, uh, there, there is a person in the call center, I think I'm hearing, that calls them and actually offers them an appointment, when it's available, of course. Is, is that how it's working?
So initially, they have to, they look up to see if they are registered in our system.
Okay.
So that's the first step. So if they are not registered in the system, then they do their registration with them.
Okay.
And then they, it's like an assembly line and then you candid over to one else and say, this person has an account, they're ready for an appointment.
Okay.
And then there are folks that are only scheduling appointments.
Okay.
So, so that's how the, the process is working because we want to make sure that even for seniors that don't have, you know, access to the internet, et cetera. Um, and then it's, it's flagged. So our folks are able to go back and are able to reach out to them because we had to call them, um, to set up that appointment. So we call them and say, this is when you need to come back in for your second dose.
Okay, so it would be helpful to you, to the extent that we know, if we're aware of seniors that need appointments, need help with getting an appointment, if we happen to know that they're registered or not? I mean, if we know with some level of certainty, perhaps we should send that information to you also that perhaps that will help you with your process? Although actually you're gonna look them up regardless of what we tell you, right? Okay, all right. Um, then the last thing is that, um, so do we think it, I, I'm gonna make an assumption and so I, tell me if this is correct. I'm gonna assume that your list that you're receiving for these referrals is longer than your available appointments. It is, is, would that be right?
Yes.
So your list for seniors is longer than your available appointments. Um, I would just ask you to consider at some point, I mean, at some point, hopefully, that list will be shorter than your available appointments. So at that point, I would suggest, um, and maybe think about preparing for it now, for some outbound calls to seniors that haven't been referred to you. Um, I think, and with a, perhaps with a volunteer effort like, um, Councilmember Fuentes had mentioned and I think others have mentioned also. Um, I realize that at this point, you've got a longer list than you've got appointments for. So, but I, I did find that, but at some point, we may need to be proactive in reaching out to people, all the other ways in your, which you're doing and I think are very, very helpful. So, um, so I appreciate that. Um, and I will make sure that you receive the list from the outbound calls that were made as part of the welfare checks. So you'll have that list of folks. Um, and then my, so then my last question is, um...
Do you want to, should we come back to you, Ann?
Uh, my last question is, are you working with family elder care?
Yes, we are. Um, we, we met with them, um, a, a few weeks ago. So yes, we are working with them.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Kelly?
Thank you very much. So I just have two quick thank yous. First, I want to thank Travis County Judge Andy Brown for inviting me out this weekend to view the mobile vaccine site at Circuit of the Americas. I thought it was really great to really see firsthand the mass distribution of vaccines to those that needed it and I'm hopeful that it can continue so that we can get everyone vaccinated that needs to be vaccinated. Also, second, I wanted to thank Director Hayden Howard. Over the weekend, she helped two of my constituents get, um, assistance with obtaining a vaccine who had mobility issues through UT Health. And Dr. Hayden Howard actually had the chief clinical officer for UT Health contact them so they didn't have to walk or get out of their car in order to get that. And I was just so thankful that it happened over the weekend. So thank you to everybody at Austin Public Health and also at, um, the, the Travis County Judges Office for all that you're doing to help people get vaccinated. Really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Poole?
Thanks so much. Um, I'd like to just kind of get a overview of how things are going out at the pilot site for the max vaccination site at Cota and what the plans are for opening up that in a, like, how many vaccinations do you think could happen, um, at, at that level once we get the flow of the serum coming our, coming our direction? flow of the serum coming our, coming our direction?
If you want, I can chime in on that one.
Great, please do, Judge.
Yeah, so I think it went great, and I think overall, the wonderful thing is that not only is Austin Public Health doing a wonderful job getting out vaccines, we're also getting some through this joint effort with the other three counties, and then private providers are also getting them more out. Obviously, the thing that we're all racing against together is this virus and its mutations. So I think it's wonderful that there's so much getting so much out. It does look like we will do this again this weekend at Circuit of the Americas with, in the effort with community care and Ascension and the Ashtrick, Caldwell, and Hayes Counties. We are working on expanding it, obviously. It sounds like some surrounding counties are also getting more, and so I think there's an increased demand for people to work at them. This website that we put up has, I think, 1,300 people who have said they want to volunteer. That's the central txvaccs.org website. And so if anybody wants to volunteer, that is actually a huge need that we have. But it does, you know, we've got everybody, this huge team of people we met actually with yesterday at Cota to go through the logistics, try to make the line of cars go through better and faster. But I think everybody has the same goal, and that's to try to get up to where we're giving, you know, up to 10,000 vaccines a day out there, once the supply increases. And then I think to address Commissioner Howard and other people's concerns that, you know, working with APH and anyone else to make sure that we have sites, you know, going up in other parts of the city and the county as well. But as far as these initial efforts of getting the mass drive-through going at Cota, they were successful. We hit 3,000 last week on Saturday, which is what our goal was. And we're kind of adapting the design slightly, but we're going to do it again this weekend.
Can you, do you remember what the sign-up URL is for people who want to volunteer to work? Is it vaxatx?
Yeah. It's, it's central txvax.org. And so the word central spelled out, and then TX, and then vaccs.org. Central txvax with two Cs, dot org.
Thanks. And then staff, if y'all would put District 7 on your list for a potential drive-through vaccination site, maybe north of 183, toward the tip of the county, where District 7 touches up toward Fligerville and so forth, I would like to, my staff and I would like to work with y'all when we get to that point of having a site in the northern portion of the city and the county. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Ellis?
Thank you, Mayor. So I saw in the slides that there's going to be a continuation of the Tuesday and Thursday sign-ups for vaccinations. I know earlier that was something that you wanted to make sure the vaccines were in hand before you released appointments. Are you more confident that there will be more regular deliveries now? Has the supply caught up with the ability to administer the vaccines in any, in any new way that people can rely more on being ready at 6 o'clock Tuesday and Thursday to try to get in line?
Well, we typically only put out the appointments where we do have the vaccines in hand. So we know normally our vaccines arrive at some point on Tuesdays, and so that is one of the reasons why we selected Tuesday, for example, to release appointments for the rest of the week. And so typically with our operations, we have normally been operating Wednesday through Saturday. However, because we needed to, you know, make sure we got caught up, that was why we added the additional days. So we are feeling a little bit more comfortable. I will tell you, you know, in conversations with Texas Department of State Health Services, they still only have a, you know, kind of a, during the week, they receive a notification on Monday, and then they alert us on Wednesday, Thursday, what we are going to receive the following week. And so there's still not this kind of weeks on end what we will actually receive, and that can change. It's changed for them from them receiving the information on Monday that they were going to get a specific allocation for the state of Texas, but then a day or so later, they were alerted that it was a smaller allocation. So we're still going to have to kind of work on that. And it's not at the state level, it's at the federal level. So at the federal level, we've got to get things worked out, and the federal level has acknowledged that as well, is that wanting to be able to let states know three weeks in advance, this is what your allocation would be. And once we get to that point, and it is something that the state has received in writing, they have heard that in conversations, you know, that's been communicated to local health departments across the nation, but nothing in writing has solidified that.
Okay, that's really helpful to know. And the appointments, are they going to be released at the same time each day? I think they used to be released in the morning. Last night's happened in the evening. Do you have an expectation of when people should be ready to get in line?
We don't really have a set time of when we will release them. They just vary, and it's depending on, like I said, it depends on if there was a clinic the day before, et cetera, and looking at the rest of the week for allocations. So it just has its various times.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Togo?
Thank you. Thanks for all this information. In the course of the conversation, I think you've answered a lot of the questions that I'm receiving, including about volunteer opportunities. And I would, I'll try to make these suggestions via email, but I, because we're all getting so many questions about volunteering, it would be great to have a link from our FAQ, our city's COVID vaccination FAQ, to that Central Texas volunteer site, so that people can go into that portal and volunteer. I would still love to figure out a way to have volunteers assist with registration. I know several of my colleagues talked about that a little bit earlier. Councilmember Renteria talked about his office wanting to assist, and I know many of us have volunteer groups or volunteers who have reached out with a willingness to assist, but it's not so easy to figure out how they can do that with the portal. And I would just like to figure out a way that we could help through volunteer work to take some of that off y'all's plate, so that we're not each sending on individual cases to the director of our public health, you know, for then ferreting out to staff members to try to resolve. So if there's, if we could sort of keep thinking about ways to maybe do that. And then I think lastly, I'd like just to follow up on Commissioner Trevillian asked about churches and Director Hayden Howard. That's really, thanks for that update about the work that you're doing to potentially roll out a vaccination clinic in some churches in answer to Commissioner Howard's. You talked about a mobile clinic. I may have missed this piece of it, but I wasn't clear if you had talked about a timeline on those, on either of those initiatives.
So right now, that mobile clinic has been operating since probably the middle of February, and we started with assisted living. So that process has started. We're working with Housing Authority properties right now. So Housing Authority, you know, Family Elder Care has a, you know, a couple of properties, Foundation Communities. So working through those properties initially as well, and then beginning of the work with Mills on Wheels, et cetera. So we'll continue to work with nonprofits, you know, to be able to see where they have clients that they are working with them as well. But we are, our communications team is going to create a flyer, like we did before, for the testing, and we'll be able to roll that out as well. So our team is kind of logistically thinking about, you know, what that would look like. Because, you know, with the vaccine, you have to make sure, you know, once you open the vial, you only have a certain amount of time to make sure that you provide vaccines to 10 or 11 people within a certain time period. So that's the piece that the staff are working on now. And so that's why we are really liking the idea of locations where there are several seniors or several people that have, you know, are disabled, and kind of working in those settings.
Thank you. Thanks for that, and I apologize that I missed the time period. And this isn't a question, but just a request. I don't think in the course of this conversation, you've had an opportunity to share the information about how during the storm, your staff were able to really get the vaccine to a safe place. And I don't know if the commissioners have had an opportunity to hear that story, and in the course of last week's conversation about our storm response, that was just one of a lot of important stories. So if there's an opportunity today to share that information, I think it's really significant. We've heard several references today to the fact that you were able to come back online and really vaccinate lots of people in the weeks since the emergency, but that really wouldn't have been possible without the actions of your staff. So I would just invite you to share that, share that information again about the work of your staff.
Yes, Councilmember Togo. Actually, we presented on Tuesday of last week to Commissioners' Court, Dr. Picken and I. And so we did share that effort, but absolutely, you know, applauding Austin Public Health staff, but also applauding EMS and fire department staff, because I tell you, I mean, this, you know, this city team, when we come together, we're something. Not to say county is not as well, you are a great partner, but it was great how everybody just came together, and it was just, it was like automatic. So I have to acknowledge EMS and fire personnel.
Thank you very much, Director Hayden Howard.
Thank you. Councilmember Alter?
Thank you. Like my colleagues, I share the concern about how we are reaching our elderly populations who are not tech savvy, and, you know, we have folks who are 70-plus all over the city, all over the county, that find it challenging to access through the portal. So I wanted to ask about how we are partnering with external organizations that have relationships with seniors and those hard-to-reach populations, and who is spearheading that work, and what resources we've devoted to that?
What we've done is, initially, when we set up the process and kind of the areas, we have an incident command structure that was working with long-term care, assisted living, et cetera. That team has pivoted a little bit. They are continuing to provide support to long-term care and assisted living folks. However, they are meeting with executive directors and folks that provide services to folks that are working with seniors and/or people that are disabled. So that team is continuing to work on that. Stephanie Helfman is a lead. She's a manager for Austin Public Health, typically works in chronic disease, and so she's basically still doing her chronic disease hat, but she's also heading up this process to make sure we're meeting with folks and thinking about processes moving forward.
So I appreciate that. I, you know, I know you're working with limited resources. The impression that I have is that we need to be putting more manpower into those relationships and helping those organizations help us to get vaccines to those seniors who are particularly vulnerable, that they're already set up with, you know, services because they are vulnerable, and we have these organizations that are ready. They are spinning their wheels and, in a sense, wasting resources because they're so frantic about how do we get these folks vaccines? You have people who are involved with this, who are trained to work with this population, who are willing to help with the registration. I understand there are HIPAA issues. It seems though that we ought to be able to find a solution for getting them on that is timely. I know that my office has been working with Stephanie and with Drive a Senior and other senior transportation organizations, trying to hook them up, and I know same progress is being made, but it still seems like there's not enough manpower, given that we won't let them register people directly. And I just, I know that you need more resources, and I just really want to underscore that we have these partners who are set up to help folks all over the city, who we know are vulnerable, and, you know, when we have one person who can take calls, and, you know, even before we get started, we have 150 people, and it takes an hour per call, that's not going to help us match that when you can have, you know, hundreds of those names forwarded at least each week. And so we just, I know that the 311, the call center has, you know, some personnel. I don't know, it's hard from the conversation to really understand what they're working on, but if we can get some more of the personnel focused on helping these elder organizations, because we're now wasting their resources as well in this process, and we need their resources to be helping the elderly, you know, with what they normally do, not just trying to fight for vaccines on their behalf. And so it's, 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 sometimes it feels a little penny wise and pound foolish, at the same time that I know that you're struggling with the resources. So, you know, the city manager, to the extent that we can get additional resources to help specifically with those partnerships, getting out that, those connections, because we have seniors all over the city that are not finding this process easy to navigate. And as I understand it, the call centers is really helping those who've managed to get through the process enough to register, but we have a host of people who are not, who are not there yet. The other question that I had, so I don't know if you want to respond to that?
Yes. So I want to be clear that Stephanie is an incident leader. So it's not just Stephanie working on this alone. So Stephanie kind of ties into the full operation. So she has access to all of the people in the call center. So that's one thing. I think the other thing is with the registration process, typically with the registration process, we have typically used employees because of the HIPAA concern. These individuals would have access, and we have to issue them license, which there's a cost to every license that we issue. All of those licenses allow them to be able to look at everyone in that entire system. So we have a system of over, you know, 500,000 people. We have to be very, very careful from a data breach perspective. So I think there's probably another way that we can probably look at how we can work with volunteers instead of allowing them access to our portal. And so I'll get with my team and start to kind of think of ways of how we could use volunteers. And I'll also meet with Stephanie and talk with her, because she does have access to the 63 Austin Public Health staff and the 20 folks that are working through Travis County. So we'll follow up, and we can get everyone here more information about that process. I will also, just also remind you that the majority of the people that have received this vaccine are 60 years of age and older. In Travis County alone, we have 129,000 people that are 65 years of age and older. So I understand that, you know, most folks would like to have the vaccine, you know, today, and when the vaccine does become more available, we'll definitely continue to work in that process and get folks in as quickly as we can. But we're not saying that we won't look at our systems. We will look at that. I'll have internal conversations with the team today, and then we'll get back with you about what kind of improvements that we can definitely make.
So I just want to, I appreciate that, and I totally understand that we have a vast number of folks that we need to vaccinate. When we talk about the partner organizations, while many of them do operate with volunteers, I think it is different to operate with a partner organization that APH has a relationship with, that we rely on. that we rely on regularly to help our seniors than to just take volunteers off the street who who are calling in. And it seems to me that we ought to be able to, you know, find a way, even if it's that they collect all of the information that you need and then somebody else enters it into the system so that those folks can get registered, which provides a certain amount of peace of mind. And then we communicate, you know, some sense of how long it will take. I think, you know, and then it's tied easily into those folks getting rides because those organizations, you know, provide those rides. To me, that is fundamentally different process than just taking folks who say, I want to volunteer and help with the vaccination process. It's doing the same thing that we did, you know, with the Rise Fund and with other things where we went out into the community and we found partners who were connected up with the community and could help us deliver. And it's doing that same kind of process. But it is not the same thing as just taking random volunteers who sign up on a website and giving them access to 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 data. These folks are people they already work with. They already have their data. They already have a lot of this information, but it needs to get into the system and we need to get them registered. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that one of the recurrent themes, obviously, this morning is trying to increase the capacity, especially with the seniors. Stephanie, you said Director, and how are you going to take a look at that? You know, I think what we saw also in in the response of the the community to the to the storms we just had, there's a great capacity of folks really wanting to be able to help. And I think we should lean into that. And lots of different people mentioned it. So I also support the comments of multiple people, colleagues that have that have addressed that. I also want to to congratulate you for getting 33,000 vaccinations out last week. I mean, that's a, that's, that's almost half the number of vaccinations we've gotten out altogether through APH. Obviously, the the other providers in the in the in the county and and area have continued to to work as well. But that's pretty impressive operation to get out that many. And I understand that we're that you're gearing up for additional locations, potentially the Burger Center is is yet another mass vaccination location. So that, I think that we had approached the the county about making the Expo Center available and and hope that the county will do that to have yet another mass vaccination area. So if if the government will 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 participate with us and give us the supply, we have multiple mass vaccination possibilities. I understand Burger Center, Expo Center, both drive through models being being that are that are set up as well. I was encouraged to see this morning that the negotiations were successful with Merck. And now Merck is going to produce their competitors Johnson &amp; Johnson's vaccination in order to also increase the supply of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination to come out. And and that would be a game changer if we, that comes out and the other suppliers also come out. So thank you for what you're doing and and just in terms of the numbers. And hopefully, that will will scale even farther. And Judge, I I love, as everybody else, with what you've done with the four counties as one way to 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 defend and 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 make appropriate us getting greater supply in the area. I just have one question, and it's for Dr. Esq. that I'd like you to talk about. The governor was asked on Friday about removing the masking ban in the state. And he indicated on Friday that that was something that at least it looked like he might be considering. There's a press conference today in Lubbock, and I and I hope the governor doesn't doesn't go there. But would you address from a from a science and data place, from a communications place and a health crisis, what do you think about what the governor should be doing with respect to the mask mandate?
Yeah, I I think right now, again, we have to stay the course. We've vaccinated maybe 10% of of our population. We're not anywhere close to herd immunity. And the danger that we face by releasing, reducing some of those restrictions, particularly masking mandate, which really has been the most effective public policy decision that the governor has made, certainly has the potential to initiate a surge at the moment when we have the potential to really drive the numbers into the ground. You know, I think discussing, relaxing, the masking is 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 probably more suited for the the May-June timeframe. I think it allows us to vaccinate hundreds of thousands of more people in March and April. And, you know, I think is a is a more reasonable decision then. So my hope is that that the the mask mandate will continue at least through the end of April to allow us to really ride this curve down, get more people vaccinated, and really eliminate the the potential for for a substantial surge.
Okay. Let's hope the governor follows the science and the data and 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 really serves to to best protect people. I know that earlier in this process, a lot of cities requested the governor to to enable that mask mandate to go into effect. That was the single thing that that we saw most impact the the numbers. And that seems to be consistent throughout this process. And was real appreciative when the governor also implemented a mask mandate, which is currently in effect. Even when the governor was telling people they should wear a mask because it was the right thing to do, it just never communicated the same message, the same unambiguous message that masking was important as when the governor actually issued the mandate. So I'm I'm hopeful the governor will maintain that mandate and not remove it with admonition that it's still an important thing to do. If it's an important thing to do, we should we should keep our our foot on that gas. Judge Brown, those were all of the the council questions in this round.
Great. Thanks. Yeah, I think we're commissioners. I think we'd move on unless y'all had a second round of questions.
I just wanted to emphasize a couple, one point if I could, Judge.
Yeah, Commissioner Trevillian.
And I had to contemplate whether I was whether I was going to answer this question. But but given the state of the community, I think it's necessary to do so. I'm wondering, have we considered putting together an equity reserve of sorts? Because it seems that once all the shots are out the door, what we figure out is we did not equitably get to poor and minority communities. And to see that happen consistently, I I think that we have to develop some type of solution. I mean, it is clear that some people have learned how to build analogs that kind of game the system. So if we're dealing with a digital divide and we're dealing with communities, particularly our elderly communities, that 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 don't work on the system in that way, what can we do to at least make sure that there's proportional representation in the way that we pass out our shots? I mean, I I I say this because, I mean, it's difficult. And I understand that everybody is is working as hard as they can. And I understand that you're doing a great job. But to end up, to to find yourselves at the end of the line in every system is not okay. And that we've got to develop some mechanism to say, when our numbers are out of balance, we've got some way, some mechanism, some reserve to make sure that we can reach out and call out to some of the people who have been trying to work with us, who are 89 years old, who are 90 years old and who should have access but have not yet. It is, it is unfortunate to end up in the end of the line in every process that is good and at the front of the line in every process that is bad.
Thank you. Commissioner, or Dr. Esq. or Director Hiden, was that, did you, were you looking for a response from Commissioner Trevillian?
Yes, I would hope that we would consider some type of equity allocation, whether that's, you know, whether there is some way to normalize as we go through this process because we see our numbers are consistently low.
So we we are working on a number of fronts to balance shift based on on point allocations for various aspects of the questionnaire that we see. And, you know, it will allow us to to better adjust the vaccine allocation based upon the the parts of our community most in need at that time. So there is some work being done to refine the system. I will say, Commissioner, that, you know, one of the challenges particularly that we have is is in the signup process, as we've been discussing, particularly in our African American community. We, you know, that's where we're really falling short. And, you know, we need to continue to encourage folks to sign up. We need to continue to to ask every aspect of our community to reach out. If they know someone, help them sign up if if they struggle with with the digital platforms. It really does take all of us. The government simply cannot do everything for everybody. And this is where, early on, almost a year ago today, we discussed the need for an all community, all government response to this. That is a continued need. So instead of waiting on government to do, I'm pleased to see that more and more community groups are forming their own call centers, reaching out to their their church members or community group members to ensure that that they know how to sign up, that they're signed up, helping them if they haven't been able to. It is really going to take all of us, but we are looking at ways to to adjust the system, to tweak the system, to ensure that that we get the right balance of vaccine out to folks.
I I appreciate that. And and I, let's talk offline because I have several churches who have already identified people to help in the process. And several of them are medical professionals. So they are willing to work and volunteer. They just want to know where to do that and how they can make sure that the community has access because they do. So I will work directly with you on that. And I have names, numbers, contacts, and and some churches who will allow the use of their churches as well.
I think, Commissioner Trevillian, I I would also like to bring to your attention that from an equitable perspective, the department did implement about five, six weeks ago, the equity section. And so that area has been working with grassroots organizations. And those grassroots organizations basically have a a phone system that they are reaching out to their clients that they have, that they've been working with. And they have been providing those referrals into our equity line. When we look at the demographics that we have, that has significantly helped our demographics that you see. And that has been in place. Early, early January, we implemented that. That is a part of the group that are that are making outbound calls. And so they will continue to to do that, working with those grassroots organizations. In addition, you know, we have, you know, as I stated earlier, we've had conversations and meetings with with folks. The the faith-based folks are willing to stand in and to help us as well. And they are willing to refer folks into the equity line as well. So that is the the other mechanism that we are seeing and getting more referrals that way through our equity area. The last thing I will share is is as we've done with the modeling or been able to kind of predict where we would be based upon behavior with positivity rate, we've met with with UT Dale. We're scheduling a follow-up meeting with them. And they're going to help us from a modeling perspective by looking at areas where we know there are higher concentrations of of people that have low income, African Americans, Hispanic folks, and start to talk to us about how we can also continue to tailor our operations to ensure that we are picking picking up folks from that perspective as well. So in combination with all of those things, we we do have our our task force groups that are meeting African American, Hispanic, as well as Asian as well. So those groups have been meeting during throughout this time and will continue to meet. And so all of the efforts will continue to have, working through a lens of from an equity focus. So I just wanted to alert you to things that have been going on since the pandemic began, but also alert you to things that we implemented once we started to roll out the vaccines.
Well, let me just say for the record that that I am not saying this to be critical, Ms. Haden Howard. I'm really not. I am trying to make sure that that you know that there is a a group that has been meeting and working together that wants to be a part of the solution. And and I want to make sure that we help you coordinate that group. I think that that you have you have done an outstanding job. I think that there are some things that are process things. And and that and that sometimes we have, we have to inject new opportunities and and new and 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 new variables within a system that everybody doesn't have equal access to. I know that you're doing, I know that you're working 18 hours a day. I I see you as you're working. I'm not saying this to be critical. I'm saying that there is another group that is a part of the the community as an institution that has better access to our elderly community than we do. And I just want to make sure that we that we bring them to the table and give them the opportunity to help us in areas where we could use help.
Thank you. I guess Commissioner Howard, did you have?
Yeah, a quick question, maybe for Dr. Esq. Another thing the governor said recently that blew my phone up with concern was, you know, a soon readiness to move beyond 1B. Are you guys already thinking about sort of the the numbers that would be, you know, we'd have to hit before we would expand the category of eligible recipients? The concern being folks that are still in 1B who maybe would not have yet been vaccinated and would they get lost in a larger crowd?
So I I I think my my perspective on this is we're ready for 1C now. Now, so let me explain a little bit. When we look at the modeling from CDC on strategies for vaccine allocation, when we focus on individuals 65 and older, the modeling suggests reduce mortality by about 1 to 4%. When we focus on people in the 1C group, so essential workers, teachers, construction workers, et cetera, we reduce transmission by 1 to 5%, which is then going to have a an impact on on mortality. So what the federal government has done is they've already, they've had the 1B and 1C working in parallel to both address the the group that's at higher risk for severe disease of death, but also addressing the group that is more likely to be transmitters of diseases. So I think it is the strategy, now that the hospitals have decompressed in our jurisdiction and across the state, I think we need to have a dual focus for if we're allocating some vaccine for the 1B group and some for the 1C group so that we get the 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 best aspects of both. Yes, it's going to lead to longer waits for 1B individuals to get vaccine, but it also decreases the chances of that 1B group being exposed because we're better addressing the transmission risk. Now, I'll just jump.
That sounds like a messaging nightmare.
Yes, well, you know, and I think probably the 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 best example is our is our school staff. You know, my wife is a school teacher. She has not been vaccinated. Her colleagues haven't been vaccinated unless they're 1B. Her colleagues haven't been vaccinated unless they're 1B. And I think that's, that's one particular aspect of our community that we really need to get as close to normal as we can. There's a great deal of anxiety amongst our school staff, and that's not, not just teachers, it's, it's our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, our support staff that, that feel that anxiety. And as I mentioned before, you know, one of the vulnerabilities that we have right now and extending probably through the summer will be our young people because none of them or virtually none of them have been vaccinated or will be vaccinated by summertime. So that increases the risk in particular for our school staff. So I, I think we need to move, move on as quickly as possible to start getting those teachers and other education staff.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks. And I think the Commissioner Shay had the, had a, a meeting, she's jumped off to you, but she had a question for me, actually, wanted me to address who got vaccinated and who can get vaccinated at the, at the Cota vaccination. So this last Saturday, we, we were working with four counties, including Travis, and Community Care as sort of the four signers to this letter that we, where we requested the vaccines from the governor and from the federal government. And so of the 3,000, we basically divided that up into 600 for each entity. So Community Care initially got 600, Travis 600, and the other three counties 600 each. Within that, we basically gave the Travis allocation, allocation to Community Care, also did about 200 people who are AISD employees that are 65, 20 people that were Capital Metro Drive employees, 65 and over, and I think about 20 that were childcare workers, 65 and over. And then of the other three counties, they each more or less split their allocations between Community Care patients who lived in each of those three counties and then their wait lists. So that was about, or it differed for each county, but it was more or less 300 for Community Care, 300 for the waitlist. Sometimes those were actually the same populations. So the result was that we use the Community Care platform to register people, to register about 2,100 of those people. It, it asks for ethnicity when you're registering. And so of those 2,100, we know that 77% are Latino, 7% are African American, and then the other split between Anglo and, and, and other. So at least of, of that, of the vast majority of what we're doing of focusing on Community Care patients, I think we have helped get towards that goal of making sure that we're vaccinating the hardest-hit people and the hardest-hit zip codes in the eastern crescent of, of Travis County and these other three counties. We hope to continue that this weekend. We're still working with Community Care to figure out how we do that as we're expanding. And per Dr. Esq., your, your statement about moving to 1C, that obviously could, could open up more Community Care patients, but right now, as far as I know, we're sticking with 1B within those populations. And so Mayor, we have successfully now basically each asked another question. I don't know if y'all, if y'all want to do the same, obviously feel free to.
Let me, let me go ahead and check then, Judge. Does anybody have an additional question before we let the county go back to work and we go meet in our meeting? Councilmember Kitchen, and let's do these rapidly. Councilmember Kitchen?
Just quickly, could you speak specifically to workers in the community? I'm, I'm not entirely clear what 1C covers. So retail workers who may be under 65, are we not yet to them, or can you, can you help me with that?
So, Councilmember, we have no 1C in Texas. There's a 1C, a federal 1C which is outlined on the CDC website. When we hear discussions about what 1C might look like in Texas, my guess is that it would be school staff, it would be other essential employees that, that have face-to, a, a large amount of face-to-face interactions, that may be construction workers, which is another key group for us in ending transmission, grocery store workers, retail, restaurant. You know, I think would, would be many of them. We have other individuals, law enforcement, and other public employees that would fall in a, in a similar category to that face-to-face interaction. So again, you know, as, as we've been talking about for a year now, the risk of transmission is, is dependent upon the number of face-to-face interactions. So those employees with the highest numbers would likely be prioritized by the state to be in that 1C category.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Councilwoman Ellis?
Thank you. I have a question about the dashboard. We've been discussing how a majority of the people getting vaccinated were over 60 or 65. On the dashboard, the age group breakdown is different. Is that just a lag in the data being entered, or is there something else going on there?
There is a lag with, with that dashboard. As you know, we're, you know, we're making sure to get to each of them. That one will be updated again on Saturday this weekend. So there is, there is a little bit of a lag. As you will, will know, with most of our dashboards, they're a week behind. So for example, when you pull that one up, it has February 13th. So most of them will be last week with the exception of, you know, of our daily count.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Colleagues, anything else? Judge, Council, Mayor Protam?
Thank you. I, I'd appreciate any patience that, that is needed if, if this has already been covered. But have we had any conversations about the implications for people who volunteered? I'm hearing some stories about volunteers and their status currently. I just wonder, have we had any conversations that I may have missed about people who volunteered during the course of this emergency and some comprehensive testing and/or considerations around vaccinations?
We've not, Mayor Protam, we've not addressed that during this call. I understand that there were several folks that did volunteer last week to help during the, the winter process. We are also absolutely encouraging folks, if they would like a test through Austin Public Health, we are always encouraging them to go online and register and receive a test as we are providing those tests. We are providing them at home as well as through our efforts as well as our partner efforts. And so those efforts are available. Now, as far as the, as far as the vaccines, what we always have to make sure that we are adhering to is that the state of Texas has the approval of 1A and 1B and kind of where folks fit as far as receiving a, a vaccine from us. Now, we have, when folks have volunteered in our clinical operations, because you are working in, you know, what we're going to call a hot zone and a cold zone because of your interaction with the public and several people, we have provided some vaccines for our people, for people that have signed up to work at our vaccine operations.
And which Director Hayden Howard, what I think I hear you saying is that we should probably be encouraging people who took the opportunity to be a part of that community level mutual aid effort to all go ahead and get tested, to all go ahead and go through our Austin Public Health Department website and go ahead and take the opportunity to get tested. Would you say that that's a fair assessment?
We would definitely encourage that, yes. We're available to test, yes.
So my staff and I will be pumping it out, and I just would also encourage my colleagues to make sure that we're all putting on our socials and, and our points of contact with our constituents, so everybody who is out here doing that real ground-level community work, let's all go get tested. Thank you, Director.
Colleagues, anyone else?
Mayor Protam, sorry, if I can just add, add something on, I, I think it's, that's a great point, and I think it's important for, for folks who were gathering during the ice storm with family, with friends who are outside their household, to continue to get tested. The way we drive this down to stage two or stage one is we keep the testing up. We keep signing up, going, getting our noses swabbed. We detect those fewer cases that are out there so that we can quarantine folks. That's how we get to zero. So is, it does take testing and would strongly encourage folks, in particular our, our school students who are involved in extracurricular activities, to get tested, get tested weekly. It's worth the investment of time. It helps us push those numbers down.
Thank you. Judge, I think that could, could conclude our, our joint meeting. If you're ready, I'll sign us off.
Sounds good to me. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so at 11:09 then, yes, Mayor Protam, were you waving or? Okay. It is 11:09, and with that, we will adjourn the city's portion of this joint meeting. Colleagues, how about we take like a five-minute break, and at 11:15, we'll get into our regular city council work session, give everybody a few minutes to make the transfer. Judge and Commissioners, thank you very much again for, for letting us sit in, join you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members. And we will also adjourn the meeting of the Travis County Commissioners Court at 11:10 and will reconvene at 11:15 to give time for the video transition. Thank you.